I would like to call to order the May 21st, 2019 session of the Monmouth City Council. And welcome everyone back since we took some time off to focus on our budget. And thank you all for being here. If you could give us the roll call, please. Ms. Bowman.
Councilor Belts.
Here.
Councilor Carey.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Sharmar.
Here.
Councilor Schinkel will be late. Councilor Sobernigle.
Here.
Mayor Coontz.
Here. And I want to rise for the flag salute. And John, if you've got your breath and you would believe us in that.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Lo and behold, our first item this evening is our consent calendar. That consists of the minutes of the meeting of April 16th, both our regular session and our work session. If you all were to recall those, I would entertain a motion to accept or make any changes.
I'll move to accept them.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Moving to second into.
I couldn't remember if I made notes.
Ah, good. We're good. If he didn't make notes, we're good to go on. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Our first order of business this evening refers back to a presentation that we had from the folks that will be leading Oregon's effort in the U.S. Census in 2020. And we were able to see sort of the importance and the value of the census and what all is entailed. I have since met with a couple of other folks from the Census Bureau. And as they are ramping up their Oregon operations, they are in great need of folks to work for them. They have a variety of full-time jobs at this time, and then they will have part-time jobs, work-from-home type things during the actual census, which will occur in and around March, April, May of next year. So it's very interesting. But we have also been asked to really support the idea of the census and the work that needs to be done to completely count everyone who is within our city limits. And we are actually working in partnership with the City of Independence to make sure that everybody in both of our towns is counted. We'll be working with a lot of different groups, reaching out to try and get folks to understand that this year will be the first year you can complete your census by going online, or you will get phone calls before you get knocks on the door. We used to get a little thing in the mail and fill it out. And so really a valuable service, an important one, certainly one that is important to the city. A lot of funds that we get are based on our population. So tonight, I would like to read a proclamation, and hopefully we will be able to endorse that, declaring Monmouth a 2020 census partner. Whereas an accurate census count is vital to our community and residents' well-being by helping planners determine where to locate schools, daycare centers, roads, public transportation, hospitals, and other facilities, and is used to make decisions concerning business growth and housing needs. Whereas more than $883 billion per year in federal and state funding is allocated to states and communities based on census data, whereas census data ensures fair congressional representation by determining how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, as well as the redistricting of state legislatures, county and city councils, and voting districts. Whereas the 2020 census creates jobs that stimulate economic growth and increase employment opportunities in our community, whereas the information collected by the census is protected by law and remains confidential for 72 years. Now therefore, we proclaim that the City of Monmouth, Oregon is committed to partnering with the U.S. Census Bureau to help ensure a full and accurate count in 2020. As a 2020 census partner, we will support the goals and ideals for the 2020 census and will disseminate 2020 census information to encourage those in our community to participate. We will encourage people in Monmouth to place an emphasis on the 2020 census and participate in events and initiatives that will raise overall awareness of the 2020 census and ensure a full and accurate census. We will support census takers as they help our community complete an accurate count, and we will create or see opportunities to collaborate with other like-minded groups in our community, such as our Complete Counts Committee, to utilize high-profile trusted voices to advocate on behalf of the 2020 census. And so I am going to sign that proclamation as we determined we would do to support the census and move forward in getting that complete count taken care of for our community. So thank you all for your support of that. And Phyllis is leading the effort, along with Karen Johnson, the City Recorder of Independence, to get the word out and keep us up on those things. So appreciate her help with this. So tonight, then, we start our reports. And again, we've had a little bit of time off, but we've all been busy meeting with our committees and boards. And so I would like to go ahead and give those reports. I'll start with my mayor's report. And really, I've been with you all of the budget meetings. I've had a couple of other things I've done. One is our monthly meeting with the Polk County mayors, our Polk County commissioners. We have folks from the council of governments there. And this month, we actually had our representative from Business Oregon, our regional solutions manager for Marion Polk and Yamahill County, Jody Christiansen, who's been a longtime business advocate and development professional in the McMinnville area. And they are, they used to have a real strong focus on infrastructure development, and now they are taking some softer tacks. The governor has had the regional solutions. Folks start to look at things like development of affordable workforce housing. They are building a, they're facilitating a private-public partnership of 400 housing units in Donald, for example. So a significant impact on the growth of a very small community. They are tasked with starting to look at other workforce development issues, such as affordable childcare, right? That is keeping folks out of the employment market. And so they're really working on some interesting things as far as we're concerned. They took a part in helping deal with some of the wetland issues that had arisen in the development of the S-curves. There was some different interpretations, I think, by state lands and our own wetland mitigation plans. And so Business Oregon stepped in to see if they could help with those things. So great presentation by those folks. And I want to also report the Arts and Culture Commission has had a couple of robust quorum-filled meetings in the last couple of months. We have some great new enthusiastic members. And we have a couple of things to report. One of those is Discover My Town, which is an event that is sponsored by the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce. This year is being held over a weekend, an entire weekend, and that will be the weekend of commencement at the university, June 14th, 15th, and 16th. And the City of Monmouth Arts and Culture Commission will be hosting a pop-up art show in the space formerly occupied by New York Bagel in the Old Marketplace Plaza. So the landlord and our planning commission member, Bill Foster, has generously made that space available to us. And the committee will be cleaning it up a little bit, sprucing it up, and doing a call to artists to get some work on display there and have a stop on Discover My Town so folks can see what the Arts and Culture Commission is doing and we can support local artists. So really excited about that opportunity. And I'm going to ask our city recorder to also report on the group's purchase of a piece of student art from the Student Art Show at Western Oregon University.
Thank you for putting me on the spot.
I forgot, we didn't talk about that.
It's actually four pieces that we purchased. One was an etching of a tree, and then the other one was a three-part, three pictures, I believe. It's called Diversity. So it shows three women from three different cultures. And we should be getting one soon.
So each year, the Arts and Culture Commission has a small line item in the city budget to make those purchases, and they are placed around the room here. We have some others in some of our other public spots, and we'll be finding places for these, but they are student art. There is a reception that is held, and people who have made purchases get to announce those. And so some of our members got to go and do that. And that was pretty exciting, too. So thank you for coming up with that. And that's all I have. So Councilor Roxanne Belts, the Historic Commission.
So the Historic Commission met on May 1st in this very room. And the two main bits of information that are important is they're going to be hosting an open house, which is on Thursday, May 30th, at 7:00, right here in this room. And the open house will be, will have a presentation about two of Monmouth's oldest buildings that they're trying to get listed on the National Register. And the second item is be sure to check out the Highway 99 display at the library right now. It's a lot of information about the history of Highway 99. And then speaking of the library, I can move right into the, right into the library commission meeting, which was held on May 8th at 7:00 a.m. at the library community room. And there were some general announcements, a bit of communication. Most interesting to me are just some of the general statistics for the library. People don't realize how much happens there. You know, they have over 700 internet sessions, and this is just in a month's time. 200 sessions on the children's computers, you know, 2,500 wireless sessions are engaged at the library in a month. 35 different individuals volunteer hours, 100, and almost 180 hours of service to the library, just in any given month, from volunteers. And so they add items to their catalog every month. They added 346 new items. That's adult books, juvenile books, audiobooks, videos, et cetera. And they also make house calls to people that are shut-ins. They made two house visits and delivered two different library items to folks that can't otherwise get out. So that is my report.
Thank you very much. And Councilor Schinkel is not here yet. So Councilor Carey, our planning commission.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, I believe the last planning commission meeting we had was also May 1st after the Historic Commission. That's been an active group because there's a lot of activity going on, some of which we've caused by referring things back to them. But nonetheless, the primary function and the primary sort of take-home from the May 1 meeting was a discussion of the, sort of the preliminary site plan for the S-curve development, what that looks like, what, how that's shaping up. It's getting closer, I understand, waiting on some bids and other things. But it appears to be moving forward, and we're hoping for construction beginning this summer. But that really, and without getting into a lot of detail on that, that was the primary focus. So that'll do.
All right. Thank you. And do we have any community announcements? Yes, Roxanne.
I wanted to invite everyone to the First Annual Monmouth Summer Health and Fitness Fair. It's going to be on June 1st, that's a Saturday, from noon to 5:00 at Monmouth City Park. And my company is going to participate, Chariots. We will have a booth there, but it's a free event, open to the public, all ages, all abilities. Have an opportunity to come and learn about some physical fitness activities, health resources. Groups like CrossFit will be there, Zumba classes, a kids' obstacle course and Bounce House. There'll be food available for purchase, prizes, booths from organizations like Firehouse CrossFit, Studio Fuego Curves, Parkside Nutrition, my company, City of Monmouth Parks and Recreation. So I have a flyer here that I'll give to the city recorder, but please, please, please come out. It's the first annual. Let's make this a big community event.
Great. Yes, and Councilor Sharmar.
We are now just about six weeks away from the Monmouth Independence Rotary Club's grand Fourth of July parade. If you want to register for the parade on the day, on July 4th, you can do that. You can also get a few dollars off with early bird registration, and you can contact me. If you want to do that, I'll mail you a registration form. I still need a judge for farm equipment. So if you know what a manure spreader is supposed to look like when it's in pristine condition, please contact me, and I will give you a clipboard and a very cool Uncle Sam hat that says Judge on it. Also, last night, the Rotary Club hosted the annual Rotary Awards dessert at the high school, where we honored first, second, and third-year students there for scholastic achievement. Also unveiled at the event last night was the Interact Club. Interact is Rotary, the Rotary affiliate for high schools, high school students. We unveiled their peace poll that they've been working on for a long time. It is a poll that says, "Let there be peace on earth" in five different languages. And you are all invited to come to the installation of that poll at the high school on the 30th of May at 4:00. So thank you, everybody, and I, let me know if you know anything about farm equipment. Thanks.
Otherwise, I'm going to have to do it, and who knows who's going to win? I know what a lawnmower is, but that's about it. And as I mentioned, commencement for Western Oregon University will be on Saturday, June 15th. And so that's a time in which we really like to show off our community, get those visiting parents and families. I've had the honor as a member of the Board of Trustees of Western for the last couple of years to be up on the dais and actually get to greet the graduates as they come across. And it is, it is really a crowning achievement. Many, many of our students are first generation. Nobody in their family has ever done that before. And so to see those families, so everyone in the community, I hope that we are looking good and being very welcoming that weekend. Anything else for community announcements? We did have an application a month ago, if you all remember. Nancy Bowles had heard a presentation about volunteer opportunities, and she has asked to join the library board. She actually had some library science studies in her background, and then worked as an elementary teacher in her life, and is interested in joining the library board. So I would ask those of you, if I could have here a nomination for her for that important position?
I'd nominate Nancy for the library board. Second.
All right. Moved in second to appoint Nancy Bowles to the Library Advisory Board. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Great. We will let her know that we will look forward to her work. That's wonderful. Thank you. And Mr. McClure.
Thank you. Yeah, a couple items. Development activity, the Carl's Jr. is open. That's quite visible in the community, so I think they're doing pretty well. We don't know exactly what the numbers were, but they said they had one of their largest grand openings of any of their stores.
Thanks to us and city staff.
Yes, thank you.
So then the Barn and Branches opened up. That's a repurposed furniture home to score, kind of down by where the Skippers is tucked in down there. And then a couple other items, Park and Rec Survey. It's actually online right now, so there's a tool. You can talk about just general desires for parks, more specific on ones. That's actually open until June 30th, so plenty of time to do that. Online, if you want a paper copy, we can take care of that at City Hall. And then Stormwater, we met with the consultants. They're making really good progress. We were going over most of the kind of position papers, laying out all the principles of how you go through, where things are. So, and they're moving pretty close into, you know, getting more, kind of tying in the engineering, getting the rates going and everything. So, and then the City Hall building, we actually had that. That's pretty much fine-tuned what the design looks like. It's kind of interesting seeing a functional building. That's a, that's kind of a shock for what we are right now, but that's looking really good. And then probably about two weeks out, they'll have their cost estimate, so then we can get scared. So, yeah. And that'll do it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have this evening our members of our senior advisory board with us, and I would like to invite Barbara Hogan to come forward, and if you want to bring your committee members. Then we are going to hear a report. Even though we hear about all the good stuff they're doing all the time from Councilor Sharmar, we'll get the update from them. And be sure and introduce the other members of your board who are with us tonight.
I'm going to let Pat begin. Well, for those who don't know me, my name is Pat Olson, and I'm president of the senior advisory board. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you tonight. And I'm going to talk about the growth of the senior center. And we're going to look at it in two ways. Our current growth over the last few years and our future growth. Pertaining to our current growth, we've seen growth in our membership, and we've seen growth in what we have to offer our members. We've seen growth in our partnership with different organizations, and we are still a very busy center with over 40,000 hours of usage last year. And that is only the ones who bothered to sign in. And I'll have to admit, I'm kind of remiss at signing in myself, so, because I always don't take time to do it. So you can, to those number of hours, you can probably add 10% to 18% to that figure. I think it's interesting to note that our reputation for being the kind of senior center that we are, and what we have to offer others, is continuing to spread, as there is approximately, well, I'm going to say nine cities, but that we draw from in this very large area. And we've added some new cities. One of the cities, and I'm going to say it's going to be 10 now, one of the cities is pretty far away, as a couple of our members have moved and to Las Vegas. So the commute is going to be pretty tough, because they wanted to be near their first grandchild, but they are retaining their membership, and they do plan on coming back. So I'm going to say we're going to say we're now drawing from 10 cities, so, but that's tongue-in-cheek. But we do have a reputation for being a very good senior center because of who we are and what we have to offer. People also prefer to come to us over what is being offered in their cities as well. So we're doing a very good thing. And it's interesting to note that we have a couple of other members that are coming from other cities as well. One of the functions of the promotional committee, by the way, that's, I'd like to make note of, which has kind of surprised us in our growth in members. One of the functions of the promotional committee is to welcome new members. They had only planned on having one to two meetings to welcome the new members. Well, right off the bat, they couldn't do that. Because the growth has been so fast, they've had to change that to three or four meetings a year because of our rapid growth. So at any rate, at those meetings, there's usually 14 to 16 new members. So the growth, and we couldn't handle any more than that at those meetings. So that's why we had to change to three to four meetings a year. Another example of our growth has been the number of classes that we offer. We now offer around 50 classes, which has been a pretty rapid growth there as well. We offer craft classes, exercise classes, health classes, mental and emotional classes, lifestyle classes, outdoor classes, different health classes, such as Alzheimer's classes, diabetes classes. So we have a pretty good variety of classes that we offer. Another area that we have grown in as well has been our partnerships. We now belong to a number of different organizations, such as the Alzheimer's Organization, which offers not only free educational classes, and you also know about our partnership with Western Oregon, but we also belong to the National Institute of Senior Centers, which we can draw not only a lot of information, but we get a lot of support from there. As we look to the future, the advisory board in March drew up three goals, two very short-term goals, but the one goal I would like to focus on tonight is the multicultural goal. We have a five-year goal there that we want to increase our multicultural offerings by at least 15% over the next five years. So we are going to be meeting very soon to take a look at what we can do. We have the advice of Western Oregon that we have met with already a couple of times, but we also are continuing to look to them for advice on how to go about doing that. We also want to look at and meet with the City of Independence multicultural liaison there. And so we have a number of resources to include in our efforts to do that. In addition to the future, Barbara and I have already been holding discussions on the demographics and of the future senior citizens as they come into this area. Because we both know that the future senior citizens are changing, not only into their needs, but also in their demographics. We know that things are changing with the future senior citizens, and we want to take a look at how can we serve them and their needs, and how can that fit into the future of the City of Monmouth? All right? So we want to take a look at that. Our partnership with Western Oregon, our partnership with the senior citizen organizations that we belong to, we're looking to them for how can we best serve the future of our senior citizens. So we're looking at a number of different options there. And as we look to the future, we're also wanting to serve the City of Monmouth as well. Are there any questions? Ooh, looks like I stumped you.
I did want to take a quick second and introduce the other two members that we have. Here we have Jerry Blankenheim and his wife Marilyn Blankenheim. We have a couple little subcommittees on our senior advisory board, and Jerry is kind of heading up our. of heading up our multicultural committee, and Marilyn has done an awesome job on promoting. So you'll definitely see them very, very involved in all the stuff we do at the senior center, but especially in the board members.
Yes, Roxanne.
So I wanted to ask, as you're talking about the changing demographic, I know there are seniors that still work, and so have, do you have any evening programs that you do for those of us that are senior citizens that would like to participate, but we work?
We don't currently. We have a couple evening things, such as our improvising orchestra that meets and our music jam. Coin Club meets at the senior center in the evenings as well, but the potential for doing more classes in the evenings is definitely there, and I recognize that, and looking to do that hopefully in the future.
Let us know if we can help you do that.
And that's something that we're open to as well.
Good, good.
Mr. Carey.
Pat, you mentioned the growth and--
I'm sorry?
You mentioned the growth in the, you know, in the center. You talked about growth in programming and number of cities that you're serving, but how do you, and you mentioned membership three or four times. How do you identify a membership? What is a membership? What is a membership that someone would have?
These are paid memberships.
Now, is that for the friends or?
Friends.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
It's a really viable way of documenting the people that utilize the senior center frequently.
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's good to point out, we don't have a paid membership to attend any of this, that they are open to the general public, but we do have the Friends of Senior Center, which is that great nonprofit providing a lot of support, and that's a great way to get a membership, learn more about what's going on.
And so probably then you, not all, because there's some freeloaders out there, and so they're--
Those freeloadings seniors.
Yeah. And so you may have--
And others.
You may have a lot more growth than just in the growth.
Right, there are those who come but don't, who are not paid members, so--
That's your job, Pat. You got to go to work.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alarm twist from there. No, that's, that's good.
We don't discourage anyone.
Of course not.
And membership is very reasonably priced.
Yes.
$20 a year.
$20 a year, yes.
It's a bargain.
Absolutely.
And all of that goes to support functions at the senior center.
And you can always donate pie for their soup and pie, if you want to help.
Yeah.
Yep, a lot of great ways to get involved and enjoy things without being a member, but I highly encourage membership there. All right, any other questions or comments for our great active senior advisory board? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your words.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your good work.
So this time is reserved for public comment. We do invite the public to speak to us about items either on our current agenda or just to learn about what's on your mind, and we ask that folks do so by signing up at the back table. So Phyllis, did we have anyone this evening to make public comment?
No.
Nope, okay. I'm sure we have issues on the agenda we may hear from later, but we will get to our business agenda tonight, and our first order of business is to approve a liquor license. We have a new establishment in town, hoping to open soon, I hear, and I don't see Officer Haynes here with us this evening, so we'll ask Sergeant Dorn to join us and bring forth this liquor license application for Craft Bar West.
Good evening, Mayor Coons and members of the council. I'm sitting in for Lieutenant Haynes this evening. So as you know, the city receives applications for a liquor license, and then the police department conducts a limited background to provide an analysis to the city council about these applications that we've received. Then you, as a council, can either recommend in favor of approval, against approval of a license, or make no recommendation. You have a staff report that was presented to you from Lieutenant Haynes about this, that he did on this background. So Craft Bar West is a new business that they have not yet opened. They're going to be located at 157 Main Street West here in town, obviously. The owners of Blissful Signs and Designs LLC are Ashley Dornhecker and Abigail Tilby, and they're with us tonight. They plan to serve drinks and food along with their sign-making workshops. They have plans to serve beer, cider, malt beverages, and mimosas along with some food. We, doing our background, have not identified any areas of concern. Both of the owners have previous experience working in a liquor outlet. However, they do not have experience managing a liquor outlet, but they are business owners already. So we don't have any, obviously, history of calls at this business, because it is a new business to our community.
All right, so do we have any questions or comments on the application before us? There are basically those are the details, and again, this is part of the process. We make our recommendation. The OLCC can make a different recommendation based on the work they do, but this is based on how well does this business fit in our community, so. Yes, Counselor Carey.
A question. In the staff report, it says the business plan includes serving food, drinks to go along with their sign-making workshops. Will those run sort of simultaneously? You going to have a little, do a little drinking while you're making a sign?
Yes, so for the most part, we host the sign workshops in the midst of doing all the painting and the staining of the signs themselves. They like to interact and mingle, and some of them don't drink, and some of them we like to offer a glass of wine or a beer or two. And so with that being said, we didn't want just to offer them alcohol, so we came up, Abigail came up with a really fun food menu, and so it, doing, I've been doing this for 13 years, and we played a lot with whether or not we wanted to open an establishment that had alcohol, but over the last six years, I've kind of toyed with the idea that the 90% of it people like to have a beverage while painting the signs. So that's how we decided, that's what we were going to do. And so it's about, a general class takes an hour and a half to three hours, depending how much they talk during it, and the groups average anywhere from eight to 50 people per class, so.
You may not be aware of the phenomenon called party while you paint.
Yes.
Yes, you get, you take care of the intricate details early.
Right, yes.
We're going to be doing the wood sign painting, but we're also going to be introducing different types of crafts.
Wood sign?
And macrame and leatherwork, and we're going to find, we're not sure, we're going to do lots of different crafts and get people in to teach classes. So they'll be crafting, having a drink or a tier of coffee if they want, and having food too. We're going to do that.
Recommend you work with the Arts and Culture Committee.
Yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
Very excited.
We have a lot of people that have like different arts and crafts that they do, and so the idea with this is, I grew up in Monmouth, you know, I was born and raised here, and I always knew that I wanted to, if I ever did a business, I wanted to do it here, because we do a lot of driving right now, so we'll go to other, you know, Salem and Mill City and Corvallis and Amity and all the other places, and we're bringing business there. The idea with doing it here is to hopefully get those communities and those people to come to our council. So that's kind of where the idea, doing it here was, and I was really excited about doing that.
And I see you mentioned in the application, or there was some discussion about all ages, so you may also then have opportunities for--
It's all up to OLCC what they let us do, but we're hoping that it'll be, minors will be able to come in there, because we want to do a lot of fun crafts with kids and like Mother Daughter Day and Father's Day and the stuff like that, so that they can come in. I have, I have three children, and my youngest is three and a half, and he can paint this little sign, so it's a lot of fun for all ages. And like Abigail said, over time, we're going to be adding other crafts in, and so it'll be a lot of fun. So we're hoping that OLCC is going to love us at minors. And if not, we're going to try to get them to at least do, stop serving--
Certain hours, right.
Get a couple days that we can have minors in there, so we'll figure it out.
Okay, sounds great.
What about hours of operation?
So right now, generally, we host our workshops on the weekend, that's when we're most busy. We're hoping that, we're going to be open normal hours, because we're going to have a small retail section in there, people can just come in and purchase stuff. So we'll be open essentially right now, we're thinking Tuesday through Sunday. Our weekends right now, we're booked out in sign parties, hopefully until like the end of August, and so we're going to try to get those parties moved to us, and then hopefully as people are walking by and we're open, the community will see that, and they can come and book in during the week for workshops. Be open normal business hours, so we can have walk-ins, and we'll always be open. But we're thinking Tuesdays or Sundays, that's kind of the timing changes, I think, we're going to open.
All right. If there are no further questions, then we do have a couple of options here in the staff report to make a recommendation in favor of approving license, against the approval of the liquor license, or to make no recommendation at all and let OLCC go on their own, so I will entertain a motion.
I move that we make a recommendation to OLCC in favor of approving a liquor license for Craft Bar West.
My second. Thank you, Counselor Lopez, for the motion, and Counselor Belts for the second. And if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, there you have it. Thank you very much, and thank you, ladies, for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Excited about your business in downtown Monmouth. That's great. Our only other business item this evening, again, relates to a presentation we've had regarding the continuum of care, and this would be an opportunity for Monmouth and other governance bodies in Polk County, potentially Polk Marion, Polk Marion Yamhill, to gather together and form an official designation to receive funding, federal funding for homelessness, to deal with issues regarding those experiencing homelessness. And so I will turn this over to Scott for a refresh on this and see if we are going to join in.
Yeah, so actually a good intro from the mayor. A key thing that came up with is with the continuum of care of, it's comprehensive in nature, and so one of the things that we've been working on with the Mid Valley Homelessness Initiative is looking at the systems, who's out there. There's tons of really hardworking people doing really good work. Sometimes it's not coordinated very well, and sometimes the data's not there to be collected, and where we are right now with trying to move forward is we're limited on some of the funds we can receive, some levels. It's just how strong your programs are doing, how coordinated they are. We don't score very well on some things, because we're part of what they call the balance of state, which is like 26 counties, and you can't coordinate data information systems over those things. So the idea is, is to pull back, get us put in, as the mayor said, with either two or three counties, get that dialed in better, and then hopefully we can actually get some more money flowing into our area and deal with the issue a little bit better. And so what they're looking for is a group will go to the federal government, you have to apply, have to go through a process. It might be contentious with the other ones that we're leaving, we'll see where that goes, but they're looking for support from pretty much all the jurisdictions in the two or three county area.
And after our presentation, which was held actually with our joint meeting with the independent city council at the fire hall, we, I think, felt strongly about moving forward with this and indicating our support. We do have a resolution to that effect, and that would be Resolution Number 1882, a resolution in support of establishing a continuum of care for the Mid Willamette region and registering with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2020, indicating our support for homelessness being a critical issue, and basically the count of over 2,600 homeless individuals in Marion Polk County that were identified in the most recent count period, including children's, families, veterans, chronically homeless individuals. And the entire resolution is in our packet, and I would consider a motion in favor of Resolution 1882.
So I move approval of Resolution 1882, establishing support for a new Mid Willamette Valley Continuum of Care organization.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and barring any additional discussion, I will ask for the roll call. Please, Phyllis. Counselor Carey.
Aye.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Aye.
Counselor Sharmar.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Aye.
Counselor Belts.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. We will get that signed and sent forward to our neighboring governments, show our support for that. There will be more to come as that is developed, so thank you, Scott, for working with the groups on that and getting that to us. Any council comments this evening? All righty. We are going to adjourn now. We have a couple of pieces of business. One, we will adjourn to a work session, we will go back to the table. We have two items on our work session agenda, three items on our work session agenda this evening. They are long awaited. We have been talking for a long time about sort of what is the condition of sidewalks and sidewalks that need repair. Our folks have prepared that for us. And then our transportation priorities, so it all ties together. We've, we're looking at streets, we're looking at sidewalks, looking at bike ped issues, and seeing if we can not make a bunch of huge decisions tonight, but maybe get more guidance, see what information we need to move forward. So that will be at the back table. We'll take a quick break before that, but I also would like to announce that this evening on your revised agenda, we will be having an executive session after that. So the city council will meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiator consultations held pursuant to ORS 192.662D, and I will read the script prior to the session, but a reminder that we will ask people to leave other than the press who is allowed to stay, and our designated staff will be with us as well during that executive session to present that information. So it's 7:20, five minutes? Can we do a five-minute break and meet back in the back?